Okay.
Calling to order the October meeting, the Historic Resources Commission here in room 204, 111 North Front Street. The time is 4:04 PM. The next meeting of the commission will be Thursday, November 6th, 2025 at noon. That's the business meeting in room 205. That's that's next door, 111 North Front Street on the second floor. With the next hearing of the commission being the November hearing, November 20th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. In this room 204, 111 North Front Street. Jaclyn, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commissions?
I do, Jaclyn Mizell.
Thank you, Jaclyn. An introduction of the commissioners here present this evening, starting on my far left.
Hi, Stuart Gibbity.
Cynthia Hunt.
Joseph McCabe.
Clyde Henry.
Matt Leisure.
Mike Fort.
Thank you. Are there any items of public forum this evening?
Yes, we do have a zoning project update.
If you could just state your name and association with the project for record, that'd be wonderful as well.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Henry, my name is Festus Manley Spain. I am the deputy director for building zoning services. I am here today just to give just a brief update on the zoning project that we have going on. So in the last few months, I'm not sure, maybe two, three months, colleague of mine or a few colleagues of mine have been in front of this commission to kind of give you guys a few updates about what's going on with zoning. I'm just here just to kind of add another notch to that and just get the word out that and let you guys know where in that process, what part of that process we are right now. So the zoning project is a project that we were embarking to overhaul the zoning code for the whole city of Columbus. So phase one was focused on housing, so bringing housing to our corridors. Phase two, we shifted our focus to economic and jobs, economic development mixed with a little bit of housing. So phase two, for phase one, we had the we had the policy support to say densify the corridors. Phase two, we lacked that policy basis in our plans. We had forty or something forty or so different plans throughout the city. We needed to consolidate that and come up with more updated policy guidelines that that could that lends itself to a growing city. So that work has been going on for the last few months. We took our first crack at at our map that we that someone presented to you guys two, three months ago. That map now has been broken down into to different categories and that that is due to the public engagement that we've had over the summer. So parts of that map have changed. We've taken out some areas. We haven't added anything. We've just taken out some areas based off public feedback and things have been broken down to get in more detail, which will lead to our zoning districts. So that's kind of where we are right now with the zoning code. The next phase that we're looking that is kicking off or has kicked off on the fourteenth of October is that we have a public comment period for that final map that I talked about, that I just mentioned with a different breakdown of of uses. So with the policy, the focus is just big picture. We have three main buckets of industrial, office, campus areas and mixed use areas. So mixed use can mean many different things. So so those are the three main buckets that we're that we're looking at. So we have that map available online to for public comment. That's a thirty day comment period started it started on the fourteenth. So you can go, if you Google the best way to find this, if to get to that map or get to to leave comment on the map and the policies, it's to just Google zone in Columbus and go to our website and it'll lead you straight, straight to it. A couple of key dates that I just wanted to mention, mention before I wrap up is that we're we're gonna have four pop up events and one open house. So the pop up events will be one pass. It's on the fourteenth. It was an MLK library. The north side, one is gonna be on the north side on October 21st and it'll be on Northern Lights Library. We have another one on the south side and it's on November 3rd in the Hilltop Library. And then one on the west side, oh, sorry, that's the west side, Hilltop Library. The one open house is on October 23rd and it will be here from five to seven in this hearing room. Some of brief update about kind of the feedback we got from the survey that we had, the previous survey that we had on the initial first crack map. We had thirty one hundred survey respondents. We had over two thousand interactions with the community. So that's going out to these community events and pop ups and talking to people. We had twenty five presentations to air commissions and commissions such as yourselves. We had the three zoning advisory committee committee meetings and that's our made up of makeup. That's a makeup of a group of individual city residents that kind of helped guide us, citizens of Columbus that kind of helped guide us in the zoning code update. We had twenty six pop up events. We had two walk in tours, which were very successful, forty social media posts and thirteen stakeholder interviews. That is all the major updates I have for you guys at this time. Any questions for me? All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other any other items for public forum this evening?
No other items for public forum.
With no other items, moving on to approval, the staff approvals.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Clarity, who's the second?
She is.
Okay. Something being the second. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed extension, motion passes. Onto approval of the minutes from the last meeting being September eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Having a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion passes. Onto applications for certificates of appropriateness this evening. Jaclyn, I guess we're starting right here with case number one, 161, 167 North High.
Yes, and just as a heads up, based on the business meeting feedback, that the commission was comfortable with this application. We let the applicant know that they did not have to attend and the applicant did confirm with us that they weren't gonna or they wouldn't come and just making sure that it was okay. So we let them know yes. So this application is for 161 to 167 North High Street, COA 2500946. The proposal is for regarding rooftop equipment, so replacing existing rooftop equipment with new on the single story volume at the north elevation. And then on the screen here, we have some of their drawings. I'll minimize this so you can see it better. So they have the plan view, first page. We have an elevation view indicating where this is going here. This is showing some overall overview photos of where the equipment is located. I see it's tucked back in this portion of the building. This is the existing equipment that's being shown. Here's some more contextual views. So we have the primary facade shown here and then stepped back, you can see the single story volume where the cursor is at. And that's where the existing HVAC and the new HVAC will go. So they have a color here. This color is for a proposed steel railing, which is proposed to be behind that parapet. And that would be at the north elevation, single story volume, and it would be done via mortar joints. The railing would be fabricated from one and a half steel tube sections and painted that vintage gold. And then the applicant noted that window work is planned to be submitted as part of the future separate application because there were some damaged windows that they plan to come back in regards to. Further down, just including the staff site visit photo that we had conducted last year, just include a better close up of that area where you see the parapet and that single story volume. Another site visit photo. This is we're taking out a window, but you can just kind of get a better view. There's a couple more of those, but I'll go back up to the drawings where you can see the particular proposal a little bit better. Oh, sorry, if you wouldn't see it with the parking. Right, yeah, it is setback from the street and then on that side. So you don't really see the existing equipment too easily from the ground, as you can see from those context photos there. And you have to really get a good look at it. So it's setback from those primary right of ways. And historically, there might have been another building adjacent, so that would really limit it.
A move that we approve. COA 2500946 at 165 North High Street.
A second.
Having a motion, a second, any further discussion?
I think you might want to change it to 161 to 167.
I think there's the correction in the address there.
Yes, I agree. Second agree.
Second, yes.
Motioner and seconder agree to that amendment in the address. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion passes. Onto next case, 150 West Sycamore Street.
Open this one up.
I guess this is actually number two and three.
Right, so same property for two and three, just two different signs, but very similar. And similar scenario of the commission having saw this at the business meeting, letting the applicant know they did not have to attend. But I just want to confirm if the applicant is here, that we giving the opportunity. Are you here for? Yes, it is. Thank you.
I will get seated. I'll have to raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record?
Michael Green, and I'm helping the attorney on this project. I'm the assistant, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. There you go. All right, so this application is proposing new signage. So there's an existing Kroger sign and then the new sign would be one hundred and eight point nine five square feet. And it would be in the same location for those submitted materials. The new Kroger sign will have halo lighting and a cart logo. So that site includes that contemporary grocery and pharmacy building, which was constructed around 2005, as well as surface parking. That proposed sign, so we'll replace that existing sign on the east elevation and we'll face that surface parking lot. Given the size and age of the building, replacement of the existing signage in the same locations and then the use of the halo lighting and keeping with the guidelines, staff is able to support the proposal. At the October business meeting, the commissioners present noted that the proposed signage appears consistent with the building and the new construction, as well as the similar signs that the new signs will be replacing. The commissioners present noted, while there is not a quorum present to be able to move the application to staff approval, the commissioners did not anticipate an issue with approving the application at the hearing. And then noted that the applicant did not have to attend the hearing if they, you know, couldn't. The staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA 251035 at 150 West Sycamore Street in the Brewery District, with any all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issuing sub for certificate. That recommendation is based on the city code 3116.13, standards for site improvements, specifically letter C, and then the short north design guidelines regarding signage.
This is one, since there's a supplemental adjacent case, could we go through that?
Yes, yes, we can. This up here. So this is the same property, also another sign, but in this case it is the pharmacy sign. So this will also be on that same elevation, but a little bit further over. And you're showing the the side by side here with the existing and then the proposed. Coming down here. Halo illumination, as they noted in the application materials. This is just showing some more sizing particulars. They've also included the paper application form, just for some additional information.
Questions on the matter, so.
Do we have a for the entire facade as it's proposed? Both sides?
I don't know if we have the entire facade with that rendering. I can pull up the Google Street View to give a better, yeah, let me do that real quick. Sure, yep. Okay, and I can back up a bit. Yeah.
Just to clarify, so the front of the sign is opaque, right? And that's lit backwards.
Yeah, it would be halo lighting, so yeah, backlighting will make it brighter.
Yeah.
Actually, you can really read the blue words during the day.
Yeah. There would be like a white film, I believe, on the whatever, in the front of the sun.
We just combine above one action or do you want two actions?
Since they were submitted separately, I think it might process wise make most sense if you can do two motions.
For COA 25010034, 150 West Sycamore, to prove as submitted.
Second. Having a motion, a second, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion for COA 2501035, 150 West Sycamore, to be approved as submitted.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are. Moving on to the next case here, looks like the next one's been withdrawn, Jaclyn.
That's right. Yes, so after the business meeting feedback, the applicant did decide to withdraw the application, so they're no longer on the agenda.
Moving then on to case number five, 785, 789, South Ohio. Are you here for that?
I'm gonna come back to that one.
Okay. We will come back to that. What what are you here for, just to know? You should come on forward. If you could, before you get seated there, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record?
Smorton, Contractive.
Wonderful, have a seat, sir. Jaclyn?
Okay, this up here. Oh, showing Kroger. Bear with me while I, oh, it doesn't automatically open with PDF, that's the problem. There we go. Okay. So this application for 932 Brighton Road is proposing to replace the existing asphalt shingles on the main roof and then the porch with new Landmark Pro Max Step shingle in red oak. So this property includes a brick American Forest Square home constructed about in the nineteen tens. The building is documented to historically have had clay tile roofing and that is shown in a nineteen sixties MLS photo. Scroll down here and zoom in a little bit. There it is. And so roofing, an important design element of the historic building. The tile roofing was removed by or before nineteen ninety one, based on a prior application and supporting photos, so it has been gone for some time. City code outlines that repair or replacement of missing architectural features shall be based on accurate duplications of features substantiated by historic, physical or pictorial evidence, rather than on conjectural designs or the availability of different architectural elements from other structures. So based on that historic photo documentation of clay tile roofing, a red color asphalt shingle can be supported. Staff recommends that any replacement roofing have a uniform appearance reflecting the original tile roofing and just avoiding the use of a wood shake style asphalt shingle. At the business meeting, the commissioners noted that a red color can be supported, given the documentation that the original roofing was tile. The commission noted that they want to make sure all options are exhausted to find the right product. The replacement shingle, they noted, would not have to be on the approved list. However, the wood shake style shingles would not be appropriate for the building that historically had tile roofing. The commission noted that tile roofing would have had tile caps on the ridges and suggested that metal ridge roll painted tinner's red may help achieve that effect. The staff recommendation is to recommend continuing application COA 250876 at 932 Brighton Road in the Brighton Road Historic District, to allow the applicant time to submit revised application materials. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code 316.11, standards for alteration, specifically numbers six, eleven and twelve, and then the guidelines regarding roofing materials.
I'm here for Matt. He's roughly familiar with the work you do here. What he was not familiar with was the stipulation of gray shingles, which he was not happy about at all. I told him, we still, you have to go through this process. I I tentatively talked him into a red shingle, which I thought would look good. It was shot down because of its dimensional. And to find a red three tab is almost impossible. It's almost impossible to find three tabs, period. I was a little, I'm here just for clarity, basically. I'm I'm a little confused on. What he wants is a brown shingle. And to go back to Jaclyn's point, the slate, the tile roof's long been off. It has asphalt shingles on now. And I'm assuming it must be a second round, because if that's in nineteen ninety, there's no way his roof has been on for thirty five years. So I was a little confused on how he, when he bought the property, the shingles wore brown, just brown three tab asphalt. And that's what he would like. I told him, all I can do is go talk and see if if I'm allowed to propose another shingle, can I propose a brownish shingle? He's worried about his color schemes, the the building, as you see, is a blonde. They're pretty typical down there. It's a blonde type brick. And he's trying to look down the future because he also has to paint this building.
He does not like the red that was originally proposed in this application?
The red, well, he liked the red, but I can't get it in three tab.
Okay.
Yeah, I searched.
And what what I would love to do is just poll the commission here to just, we we know about this availability of three tab has been creeping up a lot lately.
Well, they're out listening.
Based on the change in the building supply industry, I mean, this is, it's not unique to our commission. I'm I'm hearing it in other contexts and some other work I do too. I mean, the red is more appropriate than kind of switching out to the gray, just to the context of what was there originally, even if it's the wrong profile.
I agree. And that and that one isn't super shake looking. I mean, all the all the shingles come down to an even point, more like a tile wood, whereas some of them, they're moved up and down a little bit more, make them look more more like a shake. I I personally would be okay with that.
Commissioners, if I may add, I think it might be a dimensional shingle that's on the proof list that does look like it has a red color and I believe that might be the carriage house shingle, just to throw that into the discussion.
Yeah, that is considered just a dimensional shingle. It's just, I forget now which which that was. I don't know if that was the owner's cornering or who it was now, but.
This red.
Once I thought it was denied, I just kind of dropped it.
This red to me like is so distinctly not trying to mimic anything if I saw it on a roof, except for clay tile. So I I might be willing to be more flexible on this. This is a a unique scenario test case with an explanation of why, but I would love to hear others.
There's a good.
Still gets your red, red ridge roll. Oh, sorry.
I noticed in the background of one of the images too, it looks like there's a neighbor that was built in a very similar fashion and they still had their red tile and it's a similar blonde brick. So just looking at context, like right there in the background, you see, I'm I'm sure those were built probably in a similar era with similar materials and thoughts and design. So I'd be supportive, like the other commissioners are talking about, about using that as a.
The building, building incidentally is very well kept up. It's a very nice property.
What's the defense for a test case?
A unique scenario, we're curious how it would turn out, one of a kind. You know, in my theory, a test case on this is that, will it look ultimately like what it's supposed to be? You know, will it will be, will it allow us enough from the street to look like tile in some way or be suggestive of tile? I think with a with a a red ridge roll cap, I think it's actually gonna help the corner pop out, just like the tile used to have kind of a popped out, you know, real strong corner. So to me, it would probably look better than what it is even today.
So adding a ridge line to the shingles as he's describing them.
Yeah. Yeah, specifically in tinner's red, not in the gray.
Right.
Or in a red, actually, that maybe, I would even be flexible enough to say that the ridge cap maybe doesn't even need to be the tinner's red, but it would be a red that's paired with the shingle, whatever that paint match is.
Be advised staff.
Yeah, review, could be reviewed by staff.
That's. Not just to clarify for myself, I don't deal with roofs very often, but so the so the color is, we have another shingle that has the color that's approved, or is it the type of shingle that's being proposed?
We normally would request the three tab shingle.
Right.
To be used, but three tabs.
Not available.
Just not become available. We don't have a precedent for the red much, really, except for there's one instance where there would be a red color available, but.
Oh, sorry, yeah, for there's one shingle on the approved list that typically we don't approve in red, but it does have a red option.
That that option is not available or you just don't prefer that option?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
What, so there is, there is one manufacturer on the kind of the pre-approved list, so to say, and that has a has a red color available. And what what is the make of that product?
I believe it's the certainty shingle. And I can pull up our approved shingles list just to give a look here.
Yeah, the red's fine. I tend to agree, I just want to make sure we're not, yeah.
I think it is critical.
Yeah, for this house, I think it makes, not having a red roof on it kind of make, like breaks the look of it apart a little bit.
I found a bunch in the UK.
No.
Yeah, we'd like you to import those.
Get some terror free relief on it somehow.
Get your euros out.
Yes, I believe it's that certainty carriage house, which is a dimensional shingle that has more of a slate-like appearance typically, or at least a uniform appearance. And then normally the color is Stonegate, Stonegate gray when it's used for replacing roofs that typically had asphalt, or sorry, slate shingles. But it, I believe it does come with, or a red color is an option that is available for that particular shingle.
House that would.
It would.
That that's appropriate.
No.
Okay, at all.
No. Now it'll split corners.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's more like like.
I I somehow feel like what the applicant proposed originally.
That's, that was my question, so, okay.
With the roof line.
Yes. I I think this one's worthy of a consideration, given its unique.
Yeah.
Unique precedent of knowing what was there originally.
I think Clyde made a good point too, with that particular shingle and that profile, it's doesn't read as a shake shingle like some of the others do as well.
You want to give a motion correct?
Wait, I have one other question. Did you say the owner planned to paint the building in the future or the trim?
He he is not a wealthy individual. He's he's colored, he's money conscious. He he needs his roof, but he's also looking in the future, short term, where he's going to paint. That's why he didn't paint.
Paint the brick?
No, 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 not paint the brick, he's got wood. There's wood.
Just talking about the trims.
Paint the wood trim?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
No, just just the wood.
I didn't want him painting the brick and having to remove it.
No, he's he's trying to look down and say, well, if I do get a red roof, that would be okay, but now I'm I'm trying to get. Color scheme organized so that he's happy with the.
Okay, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure it was the trim he was painting.
And now.
And I, I'm I'm comfortable with the roofing wholesale has the tinner's. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, uh, Roofing Wholesale has the tinner's red ridge roll. They only have two colors, by the way, which shocked me. And I want to think he said black, but it might've been gray. I forget.
Yeah, we, we don't want gray. Uh, and then also relate to the owner, please, before he paints even the trim, please get approvals.
Yeah, he knows.
Paint color. Okay, great.
Jaclyn, Jaclyn keeps me informed on that stuff. It's nice to see you, Jaclyn, since I get your emails and now I see who you are.
Absolutely.
Jaclyn, just want to confirm, this is the Landmark Pro Max Def shingle in Red Oak. That's the one that we're looking at there in the picture that we all agree.
Yeah, let me.
Max Def Red Oak.
Yeah, it's kind of showing me the side view here. Yeah.
It says Red Oak, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says Max Def Red Oak.
And so Certain T shingle, it looks like, Landmark.
I think it's the same color. But it's probably very difficult to find, and I'm not sure. It's a possibility.
See here.
Landmark Red Oak from Certain T. And that's what's in the, the notes is the Landmark Pro?
Yeah, I think that's. I think it's the same one.
Same one? Okay.
Usually the, the Landmark Pro is the dimensional like. This one, okay. Yes, yeah, I believe so. It might be the same thing, so. Now the roofers use a couple of different, you know, marketing terms that says Max Def. And it also says, yeah, Landmark Pro up here with the branding, and then down here, they have Max Def. Uh, unless you're seeing something different.
Search that you just did.
Yeah.
Scroll down just a little bit.
Sure.
Keep going.
Yep.
Saw it a minute ago, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
Slide down.
Yep.
There you go, that roof on the left, Facebook.
Street Fighter.
I think it is the dimensional.
Company.
Yeah.
But it says Red Oak, doesn't say, it just says Landmark Pro.
I believe it's more of a marketing thing, because I'm seeing, it's not as obvious, which is good. I'm seeing like different shapes of the shingles, which is usually typical for dimensional. It does look flatter, and if that, and maybe that's the case of, um, that this will look, you know, closer to the uniform, which would be great.
It sounds like it could be either Certain T or Landmark, or is Landmark a subset of Certain T? I just want to make sure I'm stating the right shingle.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Certain T should be the actual manufacturer, and they have like the sub, um, product.
Yeah, exactly.
Got it, okay.
I'll just do here a quick check to make sure it's not two different things. Okay, it sounds like it's, um, yeah, color palette.
Got it, okay, I think we're good then. Like to make a motion for COA two five zero zero eight seven six nine thirty-two Bryden Road to approve the package as submitted with the approval of the Landmark Pro Max Def shingle in Red Oak. Like to note that we're approving this, um, as a test case due to the lack of availability of product in three tab shingles, especially in the red color. And this will, is context appropriate? And will mimic the historic nature of the previous tile roof? Anything else to add?
The ridge line in tinner red.
Um, yeah. Commission, uh, would also like the applicant to follow up uh, with Jaclyn to confirm that the ridge roll will come in a, a red color?
Yes.
And confirm the material.
I'm sorry?
And confirm the material.
Of the ridge roll?
Yeah. Which does it come from?
It's just, just one material.
It's just a metal ridge roll versus cut shingle tabs.
Yeah, metal.
That the ridge roll will be of a metal material.
And the red color.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion in a second, any further discussion? Any other clarification, Jaclyn?
No, I think we're all set.
All is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Then I'm assuming you send an email?
That's right. So within a couple of, uh, business days, we'll follow up with, um, your certificate of appropriateness.
I didn't know the building I was walking into today. I haven't been down here in a long time.
Oh, yes.
Boy, totally different. It is, looks nice. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, looking, uh, I think we're, we're missing a few cases here potentially. So Peter, you're with which address again?
Rustic Place.
Rustic Place, why don't we have you come up and we'll jump to case number nine? Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
State your full name and association with the property for record.
Peter Kranach, Principal Rogers Kranach Architects, Architect on the project.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Okay, bring this up here. What is Adobe doing? All right, this application for one five seven Rustic Place, um, is proposing new construction, exterior alterations, roofing, landscaping, and hardscaping. So this application previously became, came before the commission as a conceptual application at the last month's September HRC hearing. Uh, the property includes a nineteen thirties, one and a half story, brick English cottage style residence with an attached integrated garage and a garden shed. Um, so the application overall, the commission's questions from the conceptual review, uh, were largely just for regarding windows and then some landscaping finalizing details. Uh, I don't believe the commission had any additional questions or concerns about the other portions of the application. At the October business meeting, the commissioners noted that they were not seeing large areas of rust or degradation of the steel of the original historic windows that were in the submitted photos. The commission had noted that they see areas where windows need re-clazing, new putty, peeling paint, and noted that they need to evaluate, just like any other window replacement, and confirming that the original windows truly cannot be repaired. The commissioners had expressed concern that the replacement mullions for some of the historic windows were not like for like. The commission noted that windows such as window number five and window number ten were still being shown with a different mullion configuration. The commission noted that they would need a strong reason, such as egress safety, to deviate from the city code and guidelines, and could not approve replacement of historic windows with a different design or size to match other windows or interior programming reasons. Uh, the commission noted that if the proposal was just a window replacement without any other work, would also require any approved replacement windows to match. And the commission noted they could discuss further at the hearing. In response to the business meeting feedback, the applicant has submitted additional photos and updated exterior elevations and windows quote. Based on the submitted photos, there is a window number twelve, which has significant rust that would require replacement of portions of the window. Let's scroll to that photo in here. Let me see here. All right, let me, I'm going to jump to the application file, just to make sure we can bring those most recent photos up for the commission. It looks like they did not make it onto the actual application materials, so let me see here.
Hard copy of that, sorry.
No, you're all good. Uh, we have it on in our files, so you can bring that up. Let's see if these are, here we go. All right, so these are, I believe, the most recent photos. Um, you see here, they have window number five labeled, um, identifying rusted hinges, aftermarket storm window panels with wide frame. And then over here, there's a note of rusted hinges, aftermarket storm window panels with wide frame. Uh, window number eleven, uh, similar note. And then window number twelve with the note that, um, existing window twelve is to be removed, and then a new window will be installed in the new opening in the same wall, approximately three feet to the east. And so window number twelve is the one that looks like it has some significant rust, very apparent here. That one is to be removed anyway. Uh, the remainder of the original windows appear to be in repairable condition. So usually being painted shut is, uh, not sufficient reason for uh, Historic Preservation Office for replacement of historic windows if the window material itself is still solid. Replacement of broken glass and then removal or replacement of storm windows are items that can be supported. City code stipulates that deteriorated architectural features shall be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. In the event replacement is necessary, the new material shall match the material being replaced in composition, design, color, texture, and other visual qualities. And then in regard to windows specifically, the guidelines specify that all parts of a replacement window, including the sash frame, style, rail, sills, molding, and muttons must match the existing contributing window replacement, and then replacement windows should match the contributing windows and material size, profile, operation, and proportion. In regard to alternate materials, the guidelines note that an aluminum clad wood window or vinyl clad wind window may be considered if the size, profile, operation, and proportion match the contributing window. So staff recommends approval of application COA two five zero one one two five at one five seven Rustic Place in the old Beachwald Historic District with the following conditions. And that is that either original windows are repaired, or if, uh, replacement is approved, they are replaced with windows matching the original window design. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three one one six point eleven, the standards for alteration, and then the guidelines regarding new construction, um, patios and decks, porches and stoops, windows and window replacement.
Is there anything that it's time to get over?
Sure, if I may. Talking to the owner about how much work they've put into the windows over the twenty-five years that they've owned this house. There was a time when this property was not under the jurisdiction of HRC. At that time, the owner replaced the second floor windows, um, in the front of the house and on the sides of the house with the Marvin Ultimate windows. At that time, they probably would have replaced all of the windows, but they knew that they were going to do a major addition on the back of the house at some point, so they didn't proceed with that. They have maintained painting these windows almost every other year due to the condensation that forms on the interior of the single pane glass and the steel sash. They love the windows, um, but they're getting to a point where even the hinges that operate the casement windows are rusted shut. So the, uh, window twelve that you saw, the bad condition of the rusted area below that, even though that window is being removed and a different opening is being created near that window, it, that's kind of the condition that we see behind the storm window. It's that aftermarket aluminum, um, storefront, store, storm windows that were, uh, connected to the old steel sash windows. We feel that they had to put that storm window in to prevent as much as they could infiltration and the condensation on the interior during the winter. So it's unfortunate because of storm windows, the, the profile of those are wider than the steel sash windows. And we think that, that that is, um, uh, an unfortunate aesthetic on these windows. The Marvin Ultimate windows, since they're double pane glass, obviously we don't have the condensation problem with those. So this is kind of a unique situation for you. Under HRC, um, we understand you want to make sure that you're not setting a precedent for people replacing the steel sash windows with Marvin Ultimate, even though Marvin Ultimate is on your, your, um, approved window list. Since there are Marvin windows on the second floor and on the sides of the house, uh, on the second level, we're really focused then on the front of the house on the first level, which there are two living room windows. And then there are also very similar living room windows on the east side and the west side, just off the corners of the front of the house. The one on the west side has really suffered with the weather, the exposure that it has to, uh, wind and exterior. And I'm not certain I have a good photograph that I've given you. Uh, I asked the owner to send me some of this. His daughter just got married last weekend, so, um, and that's another reason why the windows look good, because they've been painted recently. But we've been working with Marvin to look at if we can replace the steel sash windows that have fixed transom and fixed side panels, but an operable center panel. Can they replicate, replicate that? Uh, in, in the case of on the rear of the house, window number five? We're looking then at duplicating the actual, um, configuration of that three panel window. But we want to do it in a way that it's just one casement. Marvin can't make the narrowness of the small windows to match the ultimate windows that are on your approved list. They just can't do it. So we're proposing that that's a single casement, and we have a, a, there it is. Should think it's down right there. So you can see, you know, originally the center.
Way better, by the way.
Right.
Okay. Like that, that actually goes more towards, I think, what, you know, I, I think you did a very good job of demonstrating the need of why to replace these windows.
Yeah.
I've been through projects with, with steel windows, and when they degrade, it's a problem. And it, it's kind of a crap shoot whether they're going to hold together when you weld steel, bondo, repair, do all sorts of tricks that may never even hold up. But I think one of the concerns that jumped out at our business meeting was when we have allowed replacement, it's just been to require the match of molyan and jam style sill condition to the closest possible. And I think the proportions in the, the molyan division was just, like, we had to get it closer. So this, this is at least going the direction of closer.
Sure.
I think some of us, I, I'm hearing yay is good.
Okay. The problem with the steel windows is the deterioration is hard to photograph because the deterioration is in between, is around the glass panes, and it's ins, the rust is on the inside and is disguised by the paint. It's falling apart inside, and the photographs don't show it.
Right.
And so if, if it's looking that bad in the photos, the rust is often totally through it, and you're just.
But.
I, I, I would support replacing those windows.
But thank you for proposing something that's more closer to the aesthetic.
Okay.
That's, that's critical, I think, for my support.
Right, because going from, from three across to four across is noticeably different.
And, and I think you've combined into one casement, that functionality doesn't bother me. I don't know, other commissioners, I, I get may also tied to some functionality you need in the, in the space itself. Egress, light ventilation.
Yes. So same issue with window ten. That's on the east elevation. It's the dining room window. Again, it has fixed, I guess, a fixed transom, and then it has two fixed side panels.
So do we have a revision on number ten as well to bring up?
You do. If, if you can, Jaclyn, go to the east elevation. There. So right in the middle, um, you can see how, again, we're trying to duplicate the overall configuration. But again, those casements are just two casements that have two panels in each of them, similar to what we were just discussing with the window number five.
Again, the molyan pattern looks the same. It's like when the window's closed, it looks a lot more like it used to.
And we feel it's, it's, it's a good solution. It eliminates the storm window, which is quite frankly, undesirable aesthetically. So we hope that you'll accept that.
Do, do you have that in a shop drawing form like the other one?
We do. It does. Yes. Yeah, if you scroll down.
There's the first one.
That's window five. You're getting right to it, right at the bottom. There it is on the bottom.
That looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that, I mean, I am not bothered by the-
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's much better. It's good. You okay?
Sure. Are we ready for a motion or you want more?
I, I think we're ready.
Okay, uh, let me get my tablet back up and so I can find the number. Um, I move to approve, um, oh, now I've closed my tablet.
Two five zero zero.
Yeah.
Nine four two.
And the address?
One five seven.
One fifty seven Rust.
Yes, as appro- as submitted.
Second. There's a motion and there's a second. And just for clarity, it's COA two five zero one one two five one fifty seven Rustic Place. Okay. Any other further discussion? And, uh, just for record, uh, we have a compelling case that enough material has been presented here for re- that warrants replacement on the windows and the applicant has made revisions as requested regarding Molyons and patterns, though the operation is recognizably changing for other purposes within the interior and the rehab.
I'd also like to note, in the event that you do take these out, which sounds like you're going to, assuming this is in that direction, to keep a pile of those old windows that if somebody does need a part or two, maybe if those were donated to somewhere or if they were presented to a rehab window facility or something of that nature, that would be kind of nice to see some of that being used.
Do you have a source for that?
I don't.
No?
But maybe we could look at staff.
I doubt Habitat would take anything like that.
Yeah.
Maybe Architectural Salvage?
Well, yeah. Architectural Salvage would be my guess, but I'm sure trying to find a 70-year-old cranking mechanism is ridiculous, but just a thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Nice project. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for the- Thank you for making those changes too.
Yeah.
Okay. Jaclyn, if we could, um, are there, are there any cases on here that you know that the applicant will not be here this evening that we can cover?
Um, I haven't had anyone else confirm they are not coming. I do have someone confirm that they plan to come and I had done a site visit with them today and let them know that they probably wouldn't be here until after five. Um, so I expect they'll be coming, you know, within a few minutes. The address for that is, it's a conceptual, so it's number 10 on the agenda, 1469, 1471, Brighton Road. So I do expect that applicant to attend. Um, and the other applicants, they might have seen the timestamp, just a heads up. But otherwise, there is an application that I know the commission was supportive at the business meeting that we could touch on and, you know, possibly take action in the meantime. Um, so that is number seven, 711 Kimball Place regarding solar panels.
Okay.
Get that application up here. There's two solar panel applications, um, one of them, the commission, oh, we got someone in.
Which, uh, which address are you here for, sir?
Perfect.
Why don't you, uh, come on up here? We're gonna switch to your case. That's all right. He can, he can join when he, before you sit down, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes.
State your full name and association with the property for record.
Eric Becker, owner.
Okay, wonderful. We're gonna roll to that since we've got a-
Someone here, yeah. Okay, so this application for 1469, 1471 Brighton Road, um, is proposing construction of rear porches at the south elevation. So you see that south elevation pictured here in this photo. I'll jump to, there's staff report for this one. Okay, so an application for variances was recommended at the May 2025 hearing. And then generally, this property includes a 1920's brick American four-square duplex situated on a corner lot of Brighton Road and Miller Avenue. The building previously had two, two-story porches that are reflected in sandboard mapping. Nonhistoric porches that retain the same footprint were removed by the prior owner due to being in disrepair. Um, and then as part of that work and some other work that prior owner did, the property has existing code violations regarding basement windows, coal chute, doors, transoms, porch ceiling, handrails, and then those rear porches. The current owner purchased the property in April of 2025. At the October business meeting, the commission noted that they are supportive of the concept of putting back porches with the simple stair at this location. Uh, and they could see that there is previously a fire escape and other modifications at one point. The commissioners noted that complete accurate drawings will be the key, noted that the floor plan does not match the rendering, and then the railing and landing do not appear to be co-compliant in the rendering. The commission noted that it may be helpful for the applicant to have an architect create scaled and measured drawings. Uh, the commission noted that the stair shown in the rendering is very modern in style and so recommend the stair be simple and period appro- or period appropriate. The commission asked about the glass block windows, noting that they appeared newer and were not approved, and staff confirmed the glass block windows were part of an existing code violation. So this is a conceptual application, so the recommendation is the commission offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code 316.11, standards for alteration, and then the guidelines regarding porches and stoops. Thank you. Uh, we do have, um, applicants submitted today, another rendering that's helpful.
Generally, overall, I remember when the bad porches were falling apart on the back of this property. I object to putting porches back on it. I just think we need full drawings.
Mm-hmm.
And could it be a little bit less modern and more like the wood columned porches it once had, which is basic wood railings? Is there a picture of the front of the property as well?
I don't think we have one in the packet, but I can pull up the street view.
There's a front porch. Yeah, there, there was, there used to be sort of solid railings. I think they had like a board, a board, kind of a board and baton almost looking rail on it.
We don't have historic photos?
No.
No, no historic photos.
The, the, the wood, so that they only came off a handful of years ago. I mean, yeah, yeah.
If he jumped back. So this is the 2021 street view.
Problem with this property, as I recall, is it was getting broken into as well. It was kind of just suffered neglect for a long time.
Well, I looked back all the way to 2024 on the auditor's website, it's boarded up ever since then, which was surprising to me, but like, like-
At the front here.
I just bought it in April, so.
We go to the auditor's site, look at the story.
I think we can go back in time too.
How far back earlier than?
Uh, sorry. So what, um, it goes back, yeah, 2007. 2009 is usually the clearest that it goes, but you can get 2007. Oh, yeah. Oops, rolled too far. Real far, okay. That's, orient's here, I'll jump back. 2009. 2007 is always a little dark. Um, oops, I jumped back again. So 2000, 2009 is usually a better bet. Falling apart then, yep. There's a stair right here. And then, yeah, at some point, some other items have been added. Jump back to 2021, see some panels.
That's what I remember is that panel railing right there.
You think that was consistent on the second story? Probably would make sense.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's what you see in the neighborhood and a lot of other spots. It was just these kind of basic panel railings.
If you look at the other houses on the same block, there's actually a number, as you would expect, there's like similar design.
Yeah, yeah, this is like, it was a formulaic house, so. Yeah, and these, I think as wood columns rotted, you know, people's response was, I'll just put in wrought iron kind of columns. I mean, that was the cheap, easy replacement manner, but.
What do you think of the wood? The wood panel part, the?
Oh, would, so the, I'm a little confused because I think one of the designs we submitted was wood. And then I think the feedback we got was maybe something simpler, and so that's why we did the iron and wrought metal?
I think what we were seeing is like, like, to me, there's a lot of iron on this whole thing, and could you go back to the essence of wood columns and wood railings? Because I think it would just soften it back to being what this home's supposed to be.
It's what the house-
That was the design that we put first, so, um-
You're saying when you came previous to the commission?
That we put up on the, that we put up for feedback when we first submitted this.
Roughly when?
I think this was the, yeah, the one that we have.
You haven't seen it, no, this was feedback we got before we brought it here. So I certainly-
Feedback from who?
Uh, I, from the, the, um, alias, email alias, the HRC email alias.
That would just be me, but I haven't seen a wood for porch.
We had the design already in wood, it's just we flipped it to metal because-
Yeah, just square column wood posts, you know, that would look good and just a typical ballast rock, you know, corner post with a typical railing. I mean, just, you could simplify this down just to being a lot of wood related stuff that probably looks good.
I don't mind that. Jaclyn, if you have ideas, like examples, then we can certainly-
So we have, uh, we do have that example when, uh, so Julie Bullock came before the commission.
He does very good detailed work.
Yes, uh, and so very similar property, um, like, you know, we're discussing the very formulaic house, um, and I think, I believe Julie used wood for rear porches. And I can bring that up too. So I do remember the-
Do, do you need to put back this sort of, uh, fire escape looking staircase?
Well, it's a triplex, and so we want that to be the entrance to the, to the second story apartment. Was already there, we didn't think it would be a problem to do that. We were going to be putting it on the inside of the front door, but then the planning or planning department said if you do that, then all of a sudden becomes commercial. You have an inside stairway to a second floor apartment. So we ripped that out and then this was the alternative is putting it on the outside to, so it, it doesn't become non-residential.
And being there was one there, I think, I think we can support one there again.
It'll be, it'll make it look like a fire escape still, sort of.
Yeah.
I think even if the stairs were metal, but the porches were wood, you know what I mean? I think that's, the stairs would, the stairs would go away. Which that, just with wood on each porch.
Oh, okay.
Details, maybe, I'm just thinking out loud.
I think it's critical that you engage with an architect though to come up with the actual measured drawings that'll show all the details of the porch and the, you know?
I left a message with one today, so it was Valerie, I don't know if you ever work with her.
I asked who did the drawing that you have so far?
This one? My contractor did this. Well, he contracted it out to have it.
So can I make a comment about that? So this sounds nitpicky, but it's important, I think, any landscaping stuff, not in your scope, so I would just remove all of that if you resubmit a rendering.
Okay.
So I, like, I see, like, stuff that I definitely don't think would get approved on there, so if that's not in your scope.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, set in a swamp.
Yeah. Think they probably just use the template.
I, I understand, but just for me. Yeah, we're, we're literally reviewing things, so.
I, I like the idea, potentially the, um, going back to the wood on the porches and then the, the metals. The metal stair I kind of like, like, like the other commissioner's saying, because it does kind of fade away. It's such a, the scale of the building is really nice, like, I really am kind of smitten with just the scale of it and I, I don't know, I like it a lot. So, um, I, I think trying to minimize the stair, the visual of the stair, I'd be in support of that, but then going back to something a little bit more historically appropriate with the porches, I think.
Yeah, we could do that too.
And there's a split reception there. I'm on the wood side of the house, because the building calls out for wood to me.
Yeah.
Although I understand the perspective.
True.
It's not unusual for me to be a slightly different, the rest of the country.
And if you do want to do any site work, we just need a sketch or something of what that would look like, so.
What do you mean by site?
Any landscaping or any changes to the-
I have no idea for that.
Yeah, right.
If you find an appropriate architect, that, this'll go real smooth.
Yeah.
And all these things were sort of discussing detail-wise.
It is critical in the Brighton Road District to know that there's all these embankments that we, you know, people do try to request retaining walls and stuff, and there have only been a handful of really unique instances where that has been all, okay. But generally, no.
Our neighbor has one in the front.
We, we generally don't approve new retaining walls in this district because that's part of the uniqueness of this district.
Yeah. I live in Bexley and there's no fences allowed in the whole city, right? So I completely understand.
Um, I was trying to look for that similar one that we had seen before, and I thought it had been this property. Or, sorry, not this, the one that I'm looking at, as far as this property. Just says, uh, just to show like the example we shared to make sure that this is the direction that the commission would, uh, be okay with. Yeah, where is the drawings for that?
Yeah, so, so this, see, remember the cookie cutter house factor? Look at the back of your house, look at this right here. So, um, if you're able to go more towards this exact, Jaclyn, if you could scroll up again real quick.
Oh, sure.
Just bringing them, bringing them up to speed.
There we go.
They're talking about doing, they, they're saying metal steps would be good because it blends in with the house, but the porches should have wood, which like scroll work and stuff that's more historically appropriate.
If, if I could have you just stand and raise your right hand real quick, so.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Stand, you gotta stand up. Do you swear to tell the truth in testimony for, before the commission this evening? If you could state your full name for record?
Mama Dunjai.
Wonderful, thank you, sir. Uh, so, you know, this is, this is just a good example of a, of a well, you know, typical wood porch that we would have seen in the district on the back of one of these. If you can shift to coming up with a design that's very much in keeping with the wood, you know, we won't tell you what the design has to be, you have-
Well, maybe like that exactly, it's-
I mean, this, this is-
Since it's already, you guys like it.
I mean, it's pretty much there.
Yes, you know.
This is what exists in the district in a number of spots.
Is the architect?
This is Julie Bullock is the architect. Yeah, you would need to, um, so you couldn't reuse Julie's drawings? You would, I mean, if Julie created them for you, that's fine, you just, you need to get your, um, own drawings for your specific property.
This other one was just-
We, we just- We, we can't endorse vendors, architects, yeah.
Endors anyone, however, you might want to take note of that address and it was 2024.
Okay.
And, and I would not say that everybody on the commission is in agreement with metal and wood. I think that house cries for wood and wood. So why don't you work with Julie and see what she thinks?
Okay.
Or not Julie, an architect.
Yeah.
Little bit. You prefer the one to the right?
Yes.
Or we can do the one with, to the left, combine it with wood?
I don't think so.
No, I, the, the drawings we just referenced, that was replacement, that was showing existing condition, not replaced.
And this is the new one, okay?
Yeah, the one on the left is wrong, wrong, wrong.
Yeah. But it's, it's another example of like in the district, a lot of people eliminated those wood columns, went to these wrought iron columns, completely wrong, and then as these porches have fallen apart.
Because they brought it.
Right, right. Unfortunately, the wrought iron's what's left after everything else still falls apart.
Yeah, yeah.
But we would, you know, just take note of the, the level, the quality of drawings that are really needed for your next, I don't think any of us object to you putting porches back. I think whatever, I, I mean, I think we need to lean on you to say, come up with a stair that you, you want to propose that's measured. Because we noticed in the rendering, it doesn't really measure out. It would not be able to be built as it was proposed, but.
It was 1475.
Right, yes.
Uh, any modifications to the landscape has, has to have a landscape plan. So just, you know, put.
There is no landscaping. It's just dirt.
Or take it out from.
Or, or if you want to pose a new walkway to the sidewalk, that kind of thing, we need to see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there's already one there, so we don't need to do anything with that either. It should be pretty simple. Everything but the stair and the porches should be, I don't, I can't see us really changing anything now because it's sufficient the way.
I can look at the historic, um, on the auditor site. There's, there are woods, um, sides to the porches in the earlier, like, 2009, 2011.
I thought that there was, there was, uh, what do you call it, finials or whatever? And then there was a solid one, and then there was nothing. I thought that's what.
I thought the sides were the solid.
There was at one point, but I don't think that was on the oldest one.
Yeah, right. I'm just saying that would be a way to do it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, whether they do spindles or panels, I'm not, I mean, both are.
Actually, be kind, I think you go. And I assume you want the upper porch to match the lower porch too, right?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
And with, with doors, if you could actually have cut sheets of doors, that'd be great. If you've got any, like, fixtures you're gonna add, you know, to the side of every entry or door, make sure you provide, you know, like fixture cut sheets for us.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting anything illegal, however, if you happen to walk by 1475, um, might be a perspective.
Okay. My pens, let me put that.
I mean, don't, don't go in their yard and climb up their fence and, you know, that jazz.
The commission said we could do it.
And this is just a very simple, straightforward, everything about it is straightforward building.
Yeah.
Honest American materials. As close to a four square as you can get, and that would be a double.
It's a fun project. Nice building.
You have any questions for us?
I don't think so. What I heard was, um, build out, make the, the porch railings with wood, uh, propose a simple metal staircase, uh, for the back. And, um, make sure that it's consistent. What was, try to be as consistent with what was there before.
And then you try.
From some architect.
But make one correction, which is that you can make the choice on the railing to what you think is appropriate in consultation with the architect.
The railing of the, of the porches?
Of the, of the.
Could be wood, could be metal, I mean.
The stairs, you mean?
Yeah.
Right.
Depending on.
And we strongly advise you to find an architect to do measured drawings.
Well, I'd love to be able to use the one that we just saw, so I just have to be able to find out who that is and what their contact information.
Your choice. And we also would like you to take out the landscape stuff if you're not going to propose anything for landscape.
Yeah, the, on the 3D rendering, you had trees and stuff in there.
Take that out, although we're not going to use the 3D.
We're not going to use, we're just going to use the. Are you proposing any alterations to windows and doors as part of the project? No, I don't think so, right?
You gotta make that wood in there.
Jacqueline, is that something? You were there today. I don't know if that's.
I think we have the one missing door over here, um, but if I recall, you were looking to keep these that are already installed. We have the old historic door here, and then we have some missing transoms that are above the lower doors.
Try to do is to match the upper right hand door to the upper left hand.
Right.
So that will need to be part of your submission. That's just making that point. Yeah.
And the transom replacements have to be detailed out too. The transom replacements have to be detailed out too.
Why do the transoms need to be replaced?
The lower doors, are those just infilled with wood? Is it just sort of like plywood up in there or do you have any?
It's plywood in there.
Is the, is the window behind it then?
Is there anything in there? No, nothing. Okay.
How about these windows?
These windows are, they, 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 the old windows are there, the wood windows.
They're there.
Open up, yeah.
Perfect.
Wood double, yeah.
Repair those.
Single hung. You know, we kept, we kept all, we brought the windows back to life. We went the one to the back.
Where the two pieces of wood are upstairs, second floor, there's windows behind there and on the third.
Yeah, they all was boarded up, but when you bring it now, you see that window to the right?
Top right.
Next to the type, right?
Mm-hmm.
They all look like that.
Wow.
Painted.
Good.
They're all, all around looking like that.
Nice.
Yeah.
Sure there's not a door behind that? These plywood, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
No, that's original. It was built that way.
Yeah, we got lucky. The frame is there, so we just replaced the tempered glass on it, which was expensive, so.
Very nice.
Um.
Look forward to seeing your drawings.
Okay.
Any questions for us?
Yes, the window in the basement. Do we want to talk about that now or are we allowed to talk about?
We can, we can, it's a year in conceptual, so.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, we don't endorse and approve the use of glass block.
No, that's going away.
Okay.
It's gone away.
Okay.
So what we're trying to propose, you see.
I'm sitting again, bringing up the address here.
Jacqueline, can you go back to that photo?
Oh, yeah. Go back.
You see those windows that, those two small ones that you see?
Between the first floor doors.
Yeah, those ones, those are the ones that I'm proposing because they similar to the basement window square. Those are the ones, the square one that I'm proposing, you know, take the wood, build them like the old fashioned way.
Less is more.
Yeah.
And then put, you know, tempered glass on it. Or double pane.
So you would just build a wood window to go in.
To the basements.
Just frame in the glass.
Framing and put the glass on it like the old fashioned way.
Just draw it out. That's all you need. Just draw it out. Drawing in there for us. Okay. We need how big the hole is, how big you're going to put the, into the framing, and that's it.
And how wide the framing that it be.
Yep.
Okay.
If you're going to use tempered or wire glass or whatever you're going to use.
Yeah, tempered glass, okay. The other thing that we discussed during the site visit today was potentially putting a window well on the basement window right behind this tree and on the other side the same, so that it'll be an egress window from the basement.
If you're going to do an egress window, just, that has to be documented with a plan.
Yeah.
We have allowed egress windows when you've changed buildings because of code related things, fire, life, safety, egress patterns. We just have to see that in drawing to be able to consider that. We have done those things.
Before and after drilling, before you show us what existed and then after, you know, what the new size is going to be and that sort of thing.
Okay.
The dormers.
I don't want to bring that up right now.
Okay.
Um, all right. Because I don't think we're going to have to go there.
Don't get rid of them, don't add them.
Hmm?
Don't get rid of them, don't add them unless we know.
Yeah, well, there's just, the city's giving us flack about the, the stairway height being two inches too small.
Right.
Even though we're not renting to basketball players, so I'm going to apply for whatever that waiver variance or whatever to try to get.
So we.
This is over the stairs itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we have approved those.
Approved.
Over the stairs, if it comes on that you have to do it.
Like, has occurred.
A lot of times, so we'll just do a little shed rooftop over dormer or something simple, but we have done, we have approved, but if you can not have to do it, you're better off.
Yeah, that's a whole lot easier for you.
There's also the window and the attic in the front needs to be an egress window, the third floor. And there's no way to put a dormer in there because of the way the front roof is set up. It's just, it would look terrible. So, yeah, you can see.
Yeah, those are little windows that those would never look good as egress windows either.
I know. So we're going to try to see if we can get.
Is your staircase any chance on the north side, the side where it butts the house, where at least if you were to have to alter?
You can sort of see right here.
Somewhere those windows kind of stagger up.
It is annoying, but.
Half window there.
This door right here.
Yeah.
Is the staircase that goes up.
Oh, right on that side too.
Huh.
It, we, we have been like more flexible on this too, to help work with putting new life into an old building, especially when it's been like on the other side of the building where you can't really see it, where, you know, a dormer wouldn't be seen from either major street.
Yeah.
You know, you're unfortunate because it, it's unfortunate because it's on the visual side of the building, right?
Well, the front one I just, the, the front one I just think would look, I, I can't imagine how that would be structured to look any good, so that's.
Well, let us know how your variance goes or your, you know, your two inch sitch.
Is what?
Let us know how your two.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Situation goes. That's, that's the biggie.
Sitch.
Situation.
Two inch sitch.
That Gen L speak.
How about, uh, no planned brickwork, no planned roofing work?
It's all done. The roof is, well, the roof was new. I don't think, I can't remember if there's a code violation on the roof because they didn't get approval, but the roofs.
If there's a violation.
I don't.
The roofing, they've came back for it, um, the prior owner, and so they did get an approval eventually for roofing. Mm-hmm.
Brick just needed tuck pointing and, oh, we did the tuck pointing and she looked at it. We kind of get in.
The red colored mortar?
Followed the, the, the mouth, the two bag, one bag.
Oh. Nice project. Hope it turns out really well.
Yeah, well, thanks, thanks for your support.
Got some friends here, you come talk to us, let us know.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so we got South Ohio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we want to do about that one?
So, uh, let's go back to the, if we can, go back to the solar panel one.
Sorry, what one? Oh, solar panel, yep, yep, we can do that. That is, let me flip back here. That's 711 Kimball Place. So that's one that, at the business meeting, it sounded like there could be support uh, as submitted, so that might be a good one to touch on. Turn, bring this up here.
711 Kimball.
Left of the front.
It's going to be in the front?
No, if you look at the, on the side of the roof, roof on the left side of the front, it's just easier than say north, south, east, west.
All right, so yeah, this is a photo, just showing some context.
We, we, we think, in the business meeting for the couple, we've weighed in on this one. We didn't think that it was in view, that view corridor that would have an impact. They've proposed some at the back.
Yeah.
Right.
Based on where the chimneys are and or where the roof lines were, we did not see it.
I don't even think you could see it with that building next door. I'd think this is completely hid, except for that, I don't know if there's one clear out there, it's like on a garage or something.
I mean, you kind of have to have the right, you know, the, the correct side of the house to get the solar benefit.
Yeah, so at the business meeting, the, the notes were, or the feedback, um, with the solar panels being set back, including behind the chimney and on the side, that wasn't a primary view from the street. Due to that close proximity of that neighboring home, the commission felt they could support this and that it met the, um, guidelines code and then the National Park Service recommendations.
Shouldn't feel comfortable with taking action on this one?
I would. I'd like to make a motion for uh, seven, COA 2501017, 711 Kimball to be approved as submitted.
Second, having a motion a second, is there any further discussion?
Did you guys, it, it looks like all the equipment associated with it is not going to be in primary view as well. Looks like everything's on the back of the house.
Yeah. True.
Makes pretty good. There's a, did you see the big house next door to it? It's actually taller, a little taller, so it's, I, I mean, I think it'd be real tough to see.
Okay.
Right.
Any further discussion? Derek, none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Yeah.
It's an interesting one.
We don't have the same applicant here for the next case, but do we want to talk about the case and then figure out whether we uh, table that? Let's, now the next case, uh, you, why don't you introduce it and then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Discuss what we.
We'll flip over here and.
Yes.
615 South Champion. Nope, oops, there you go.
Agenda, it says 615.
Oops. Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, that should be 615. I'll make a correction if it doesn't say that. No, that should, why is this opening the same one? Yeah, okay, so we just looked at. Oh, no, I don't.
Are we going to talk about Ohio? That one's easier.
Looked at 711.
A six, 615 South Champion's right. It's, it's here in the file.
It almost seems like.
Scroll beyond the first photo.
Okay. The photos were throwing me a dent.
There you go, that's it.
What's my hooking at? All right.
So this, um, similar proposal, but there are some differences that were flagged, um, as part of the feedback in the business meeting. So 615 South Champion. The commissioners had, at, at the business meeting expressed that the two frontmost solar panels would be visible from the streets. And I'll scroll down here, you get a view of the roof plan that they have for the solar panels. Uh, a lot of context photos we've got. And zoom into here. So originally they had some solar panels on the very front, um, but they did modify that before it went to commission. And I think they bubbled this out to show that they had moved those to over here, but the concern was this solar panel, I believe, and then this front solar panel were going to be visible from the right of way, and we're a little too front and we're not meeting, um, those coding guidelines. Now, the applicant, um, did provide some additional information after the business meeting, uh, and basically their information was regarding shade reports for the home, um, so they are making the case that this would not be, or the other alternatives for like the rear roof would not provide enough sun for solar panels and those other locations. See if they're included somewhere in the bottom here. Yeah. Okay, so here we're getting to the shade reports, um, this probably is an easier one. So they're showing, you know, where the different sun is and why they chose the various locations for the solar panels.
This is that delicate dance of like, you know, while it might be that there's shade, is it still appropriate for the district and what does it do to the look of this thing and set precedent for other structures?
And the staff recommendation for this one, um, was recommending approval, but with the condition to remove or relocate those panels that are visible from the right of way. Their, um, their response, uh, I wish they were able to, here to discuss it, but their response was that, yeah, um, it wasn't enough sunlight for that.
This one, I'd like to continue it if everybody's amenable, so at least we actually hear from the applicant on it.
Yeah, I have a general question after the, the, um, Jacqueline, I think you, you were stating that since we'd prefer for things not to be visible from the right of way.
Mm-hmm.
Where does that come from?
Yeah, so we have the, the basis for the recommendation, so for city code, the standards for alteration, um, talk about the property and having compatible, um, alterations and not affecting, you know, the character defining features of a building. And then also, uh, regarding appropriateness, the commission considering, considering, um, architectural characteristics, um, significance, general style, design, arrangement, texture, material and color of an architectural feature involved. In this case, it would be the roof. And then it's relation to the features and other contributing properties in the immediate neighborhood. Um, and then at the time that guidelines were made, solar panels were not really super, um, on the market there. But they did have skylights and skylights have a very similar form of evaluation for us. Um, so for example, skylights, the guidelines note they are not original features of the residential buildings, but it does note that any, if new skylights are to be added, they should not be visible from the street or the alley. And that the commission would consider them only if they're located towards the rear of the building or on a secondary elevation where they're not visible from a street or nearby alley. Uh, and it has a couple more points regarding skylights there, so thinking about that, you know, the tech. the technology now is solar panels in this instance, but very similar, um, additive for on the roof. And then the other thing, so the city code is heavily based on the National Park Service, that's, you know, the overarching entity for historic preservation as a field, uh, and then the National Park Service recommendation, they do have updated recommendations for solar panels specifically, and so they basically say, um, kind of the same thing that our guidelines do regarding um, skylights, and then, so they, we have included that list of items there, so we, you know, defer to that as well, of preferred locations, um, you know, not removing historic materials such as slate, things like that. Uh, so that's where the recommendation basis is coming from.
For the resident that would, houses just oriented differently, and sun is all on their front facade, um, and they'll say, well, you proved my neighbors, we have solid backing of our.
And, you know, even, even more recently, um, in another state, I was reading in a journal one time, where they didn't allow them in the house, but they said, you know, you could put them on the garage, or you could put them in the backyard free-standing on the lawn, or some other options, you know, as technologies change and.
Yeah, Clyde.
Costco has a portable set.
In the backyard.
Yeah.
Costco has a portable set as part of an emergency generator. I think that, that is what the National Park Service also touches on, you know, those kind of locations of preferred locations, they say in a rear side yard, on the roof of an addition or secondary structure, or on the rear portions of the roof of the primary structure.
Two, they have all the panels labeled twos, they just pushed them back. Uh, it looks like they got about twenty inches there, up to the next, uh, ridge, because they got that one touching right there.
Right.
That would be enough.
We also asked them to remove number one.
This one here.
Yeah.
I wonder if they rotated them.
So, do you need a motion to continue?
I think we just, yeah, a motion to continue, if you're welcome.
Second.
Having a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion passes.
Okay. Now, another application that we might be able to move on depending, just because we've had, um, discussions previous, is the number, I think, five on the agenda, that 587 South Ohio Avenue, we can decide if the commission's comfortable, or if you want to continue. Um, but that application, that's for the painting code violation.
Yes.
Uh, and so we have, had documentation from the applicant previously about the, um, the textured brick, the wire cut brick, being very difficult to remove paint from, and, um, so the commission and the discussions, previous discussions had noted possibly being able to support repainting the building instead, to better match the original brick color. Uh, and so whether the commission could support something like that, now, currently, the proposed paint color is a color that does not appear to quite match, but um, either we could provide that feedback, or if you're comfortable for them to submit to staff, that could be a possibility as well. Um, they did submit also, if the commission, I, I think if we go that route, uh, if the commission did not feel comfortable approving that, at least initially, we could potentially, if they denied it, then immediately re-hear on economic hardship. We have those materials, but I think if we go on that route, it would be better to have the applicant here in person for that, um, but there could be a couple options. I don't, I don't.
This, and this has been on the agenda for a little, little while now.
Yes, it's come a few times. This is the first time. Right, yeah, the work has been completed, they have been in, um, court for some time, uh, because of the code violation, and then the length of time, I believe. Um, but yeah, this is the first time that they're officially proposing repainting based on that discussion for previous reviews. So our recommendation for this is to approve with the condition that the applicant, you know, repaints the building and submits a color to match the original masonry as closely as possible. And then, if the commission wasn't comfortable with that, you know, we could then go to other options.
It's reasonable, but is that something that we would do without the applicant here, or what's your thought, sir?
I'd be comfortable pushing it to staff approval, so long as she gets to see the paint stuff and through it.
Well, then, it's an option, I like that.
How do others feel, okay, about pushing this over to staff?
Pink color, yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, I guess so, it, uh, I kind of hate letting go of this, because it shouldn't have been painted, but I think we're at the point where, and with their financial hardship, probably, this is their best solution.
Is, has staff reviewed the financial hardship documents?
Yes, um, and then if, you know, if the commission felt, I think our first recommendation would first be evaluated, could the commission consider repainting based on the documentation of the type of brick that was difficult, if not, um, then our recommendation based on the financial hardship for economic appeal uh, would be that there is an economic hardship, and we would, the painting would be our next best course if that was not able to be done.
We already have them.
That is their proposal, yeah. Obviously, they're not doing, possibly not have to do anything else. They are including, including a proposal for paint, so my understanding is that they are proposed, they're okay with proposing paint, but I think if we were to go down the appeal for financial hardship, or economic hardship, the applicant should be here to discuss that. So more so, if we're comfortable approving with the condition, great, if not, probably recommend continuing, that way they can come in and discuss.
So let's keep them moving.
Okay, I'm, I'm willing to go along with it, and I, I trust that you will get the right color.
So trust me.
Very comfortable, hey, don't mess up over there. That looks like.
The, the hard, the hardships based, the, the removal of the paint's too expensive.
They, they don't have enough money.
We don't think to consider, we don't have.
Right.
But I think what he's asking is, is that part of the removal process, right? Is that what you're asking?
Well, isn't that what we would normally recommend? I, I don't remember the history of this one all, but I don't usually say.
Yeah, so they, they, the, as I recall, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jaclyn, they painted the house without permission.
Correct.
The brick is a very porous brick, and it took, like, it's this white, it's the wire cut brick.
Mm-hmm.
It's in every crack, every piece of it.
Come off anymore, now it's this texture.
Oh, I remember this one. I remember now.
And just the color is so.
It's not feasible to remove the paint.
And, and they tried to do it in some test.
Yes.
Platches, apparently, they tried.
They would probably destroy the brick, honestly.
Yeah, so you get a closer image of how textured that brick is.
Agree with, with Clyde, I lament the fact that this thing was painted, and we are losing this this textured brick as originally was, but.
I mean, short of solder blasting, which is horrible.
There's no alternative, I don't think.
There's probably not another option.
He blasted it, I mean, any of that, it would just.
You, we could ask him to paint all the mortar joints back. Which is done sometimes, but that might be a bit much.
Soda blasting would, if they turned it down, could they get it off the soda blasting?
It's like, any, um, like, physical thing, we probably recommend avoiding, just, it's gonna start as a potential to cause like, you know, yeah, exactly.
If, if you will, the problem is, is they used a semi-decent paint that actually stuck.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I.
Difficult to remove.
I thi- I think we're there, and that's probably the best solution.
And, and it's unfortunate, because look at the variation in the original color on this brick too.
Yeah, it, it, it was a, uh.
Handsome.
Yeah, an interesting brick inch. What about the blocked windows, were they put in before?
Yes, uh, first, did double check that, so this is, um, 2019 street view, and then, I think we go back, it's, remains glass block. Is there, is financial hardship? Yeah, anyone who wanted to replace the windows in the future, we need to be back, brought back into compliance, but they've been there for so long that, yeah.
I guess I would entertain a motion.
I move. Except to be to approve the application subject to staff review of all colors and materials to ensure fidelity as much as possible to the original colors.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, I would ask, though, could we even suggest that they do just a portion of the building, like in the back corner, make sure the paint's looking right, and, you know?
Test patch.
More.
As part of the staff approval process.
Testing case.
Yeah. I, I'm fine with that.
We're all grown this far, thank you. Second.
Hey, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion passes.
Okay.
And, Jaclyn, we want to talk about the other couple cases here.
Yeah, let's see, our, I think we've touched on most of them, right? Is it just the last one that we haven't talked about? Conversation, business meeting, is right on the point. Yeah, so I can touch on the business meeting, we don't have any, um, additional or new application materials, so there might not be much more, um.
Let's table that, if they didn't submit anything new from the business meeting.
Okay. Did they add the business meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, they're conceptual, so, um, I can confirm, you know, business meeting feedback, no additional feedback from that, and re-include that. So they have that information.
Any other items of you or old business?
Yes.
That's right. There is an item.
So if I just jump ahead.
Chair election.
Yeah, so just, again, the chair elections on the agenda, and just a heads up, that chair election's held in November.
What, what is their, what, what is the process for?
Yeah, no, it, if you, I think we have a good amount of people here, almost all of us seated, so if you want to, um, put forward nominations, and then, you know, we could vote at the following November hearing. Uh, assuming that we have, you know, a good amount of people again in attendance.
Are you stepping down? We just, just require?
It's just, every so often, we're supposed to have chair elections. If everything has a stance.
Second.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, sounds good. Mind the vote just happens.
There you go, are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Good.
Did anyone else want to be chair?
Not offended if anybody else wants to, trust me.
Matt, Burning Desire?
It, it finalizes in November, I mean.
Yes.
We get to talk about it again next month anyway.
Yeah. Secretly tell Jaclyn. On the ballot.
We're all eventually gonna find out, though.
Oh, you were the secret.
They can do that, they're too embarrassed to say now. You can secretly nominate someone as well, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, having a motion and a second to adjourn, uh, we will do so here at 5:47 PM. Thank you.